Hear ye, hear ye, hear ye. This honorable commissioners meeting in Rome County, Tennessee is now in session. The honorable Chairman Shannon Hester presiding. God bless these United States, the great state of Tennessee in this honorable meeting. At this time Commissioner Hooks will lead us in prayer afterwards. Please remain standing for the place to our nation's flag.
Good Lord, it's again that we come to you and another committee meeting, Lord, asking God for your guidance. Lord, but most of all, it's seen them, Lord, we want it with freedom in hearts. Lift up the fallen officer there in one county. Yeah, his children, his wife, his extended family. Lord, we ask that you just wrap your arms around them. Give them the comfort that they need. Lord, they don't know that Father he made the ultimate sacrifice to keep us safe. Lord, and we pray that you'll just on days to come that you'll be with them. Also, Lord, we'd like to lift up Super Chat. Lord, that you'd help him. Lord, and that by these treatments that's all that he is going through, Father, his mother and daddy, strengthen them as they stand by his side. God, and we pray, Father, for this meeting. Father, we pray for each and every one that's here. If they have a need, Father God, that they just turn to you. Father, we're thankful for your son Jesus, that he died for us, that we might have life and have it more abundantly. Thank you, Lord. We love you. Help us that we might help others in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated and please silence your cell phones. Let's go ahead and get everybody to vote, log in and vote. Need a motion to approve the amendments of January 8th, 2024 meeting. Motion by Wilson, a second by Hooks, Mr. Wilson.
This commission has had me to be brokered. It's a broker string, but still on a minor, a minor audit of a faction that we've got to get them going. Start over. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Doug.
Nothing further.
All right, any votes? Here you go, say anything. There is a whole list of our... Thank you. Motion carried. There is 27 of those. Matter of fact, if people post those for us just to review. Guys, look at the screen before it's, we won't read them out. There will be a motion and a second over these. Scroll down if you move back there. All right, a motion by... Did we get a motion?
A motion. Anderson.
I say.
All right, Jim. Any discussion? Any?
No, sir, no, sir. Just appreciate your willingness, sir.
Who said it? Mr. Bracken?
Nothing.
All right, thank you. Carried. All right, this time we have hearing of delegation. So if you want to address the county, now's the time to do it. You will be limited to a three minute timeframe. Please keep your comments within three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission. My name is Alan Lowe. I'm the Executive Director of the American Museum of Science and Energy and the K-25 History Center. I appreciate this opportunity to say a few words to you about what we do and to express our appreciation for the support of this commission and the people of Rome County. You know, AMSY, the American Museum of Science and Energy, opened in 1949 on the same day that Oak Ridge opened to the world. AMSY is in the Anderson County part of Oak Ridge and the K-25 History Center is in the Roman County part. Now, K-25 opened in 2020, which was a terrific year to open a new museum, ladies and gentlemen. Next to where the great gaseous diffusion plant stood for many years. And as you know, that plant constructed during the Manhattan Project, processed uranium on end through the Cold War. When it was demolished and the site was remediated, the Department of Energy made a commitment to preserve the legacy of the K-25 plant and to tell that story. We now at the AMSY Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3), we operate that center as well as the American Museum of Science and Energy. We're really proud to do that. If you haven't been, I hope you've been, but welcome, welcome to the K-25 History Center. It tells the story of the creation of Oak Ridge and the Manhattan Project writ large. But then it tells the science and the people, the engineering behind the K-25 plant in the last half. It's really an amazingly well-done exhibit. I can say that because they completed it before I got here. So I'm not, I'm not being boastful, but it's a wonderful experience and a great teaching experience for all ages. A special exhibit there right now of photos of processing uranium will be replaced soon with a great new play area for kids and kids of all ages using toys and games from the atomic era. So we want to make sure when families come there, there's something for people of all ages to do at the K-25 History Center. That new exhibit called Checkmate will open on March 1st. In addition, DOE is building another building right next to the history center called, we're calling it right now the Platform Building, which will enhance the experience even more. And we hope to operate that Platform Building with DOE. We see tremendous potential in K-25 for the economic and cultural and educational resource of Rome County. And we are determined to be that resource for the people you represent. Last year, the center got about 13,000 visitors. We want to at least double that in the coming years and then go even further. We've had great conversations with County Executive Preswell and others among you to see how we can best serve the citizens of this county. And I should note, we are very happy to have Stacy Wilson on our board from the Roman Alliance. So she is important, an important part of that board now as we move forward to think about how we blend into the tourism plans and the economic development plans of Rome County and of this region. One last word, Jennifer Lee is with me here tonight. She's the new Director of Development. You'll be hearing from her, I'm sure, as we go down the road, especially as we plan our gala, April 20. So thank you so much for your time tonight. Thank you for what you do and please come see us at K-25 in AMSY. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Put your name down if you want. That's a spot for it. My name is Roberta Dennis and I live in Rockwood, Tennessee. There's a very interesting article, which I recommend everybody here to, to watch, to check it out. It was produced January 10th through, through the 16th, it's for the week. It's a paper, weekly paper called The Epoch Times. The nice thing about this paper is Allen Research.
Ma'am, could you speak?
Can you hear me at all?
Yeah, I can.
I'm staying on topic. I'm sorry. Anyway, there's an article in, in this paper and it explains the problem that we have had down. I've experienced a problem myself up there, I'm in a condo in a gate. Whereas you cannot develop with this conservation easement that's up there. It's going to take a masterful attorney to, to deal with it. I don't recommend, if you read this article, you'll see why you don't want Rome County to get involved with any conservation easement because they're not really conservation easement. You'll see there and now turn into a text write-off or opinion of theirs. That's not us, not even Rome County. And so anyway, it's a land grab by the United Nations. It's all detailed in this, in this Epoch Times article. And anyway, basically the IRS, they set up new rules. And in these rules, which have not been passed through Congress whatsoever, they even, even with those rules, they have set up offices in the IRS. They calculate $100 trillion income every year. But that won't be for you and me. It's, it's a land grab. The 2030, if you haven't heard of the 2030 agenda for the United Nations, the 2020 was 20% being controlled by the United Nations. We're now looking at the year 2030 ahead, but this will assure that in only six years, 30% of our land, that includes private lands, clarify that in here. Private lands. That means your land, your houses, everything. Over in Europe, it's been suggested over here, you're forced to rent to people that are coming from other countries. I read an article. There's also, there's some contamination issues, as you know, some people that have come into the country brought diseases, the Alaska foxes want. The bubonic plague just hit Suits County, Washington State, which is very close to my granddaughter. It's in Portland, Oregon, and she's in a mission for the Latter Nation Church. So it's, it's serious stuff. Please read this article. It's in Epoch Times. The date is January 10th through the 16th. I'll be glad to provide that. To your effect, I'll try to simplify it to the county's business. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
Good evening. It's good to see everybody. I'm Justin Snow. I'm the President and CEO of Roman Alliance. And tonight I want to introduce to you guys Jennifer Brown. Most of y'all know Jennifer. Jennifer is our Director of Education and Workforce Development at Roman Alliance. And a couple of weeks ago, we launched a pretty big initiative in the county with our secret class of 2025 called 7225. And I want Jennifer to share a little bit about that initiative tonight.
Thank you, Justin. He's passing around right now a flyer. Gives you kind of a snapshot of the event. On the back, it tells you about our speakers, but on the front, it gives you a, a very harrowing statistic. Last year, our college going rate was 52%. In 2018, it was 68%. So we have launched this campaign. In order to complete this campaign, we need support. We want to reach 70% by 2025 as a college going rate for the whole campaign. But when we say college going, we have, we're working to redefine college going. We're also including some Department of Labor, the trade in that as well, the apprenticeships. But to be an official supporter, there's a QR code there on the bottom. You can be a supporter as a business, an individual. But just to be a supporter is just that, just to offer your support to our campaign. And also I'd like to encourage you that if you do have any high schoolers or any even younger kids, encourage them, let them know that there are choices. The biggest theme of our day was take the shot, take your choice. That's what we were wanting to portray to the kids is you have a choice and we all support you. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be here afterwards as well. Yes, Nancy?
Just a question. Do we have any plans to contact parents? Or do we have a marketing plan to contact their parents? Because I know many of our students, our juniors were there that day.
Yes, yeah, almost 300 juniors were there in attendance that day. And the marketing is going to start in the high schools. We secured a grant actually to get some marketing materials fit in the high schools. And then we're going to have a kind of a jumping off meeting in a couple of weeks to decide where we're going. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah.
There was a, there was a big influx of educators there that day. Mayor Jacobs was there, Randy Boyd was there. We had, we got our vocational president there with all the kids. And, and our director of schools was there on his panel as well. So they were challenged and in a way that, that they didn't get that message because now you're even including, like you said, vocational school. So you don't have to go to a two-year school or to a four-year school. The vocational is just as important. And I think that was the point they were trying to get across, was it's just as important as, as, as the other. So I applaud you for putting this together and putting that thing together that was there.
No, we, we, I along with Wade partnered together with Tennessee Achieves to this. And we decided that we were going to redefine what college going meant for Rome County. There's a, there's a definition for college going, but that doesn't quite include what we wanted to say for Rome County. And that is including those apprenticeships and trade schools.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
Hello, my name is Dale Byer, the Executive Director of Romanet and I live in Harriman. Today I'm passing on to you some information about one of the five areas that Romanet works with as far as population. We work with low-income, disabled veterans, also rural citizens and senior citizens. So today I want to talk to you about veterans. Veterans are near, near to me because my dad was a veteran in the Army in the Korean War. My grandfather was lost in the Navy in the submarine. There's a book about it. So I have, even though personally I was not a veteran, my family has served. Any of you have served? I think Mr. Huster has served. And Mr. Hooks. And Mr. Barry. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service. So we've been working with Derek Sims, who is the Roman County Veterans Officer in Rockwood. And he has seen a great need of veterans where they are struggling to get access to their benefits because their benefits are online. So we have been working, the first page here is actually a letter from Derek, Mr. Sims. He couldn't be here tonight, but he asked me to provide you this letter that he provided me to talk about the need. We want to be able to have a three-hour specific class just for veterans to help them be able to access online information. And there is an outline of the thing, of the websites that they can be able to access. On the second page, the other page here is an actual proposal that I'm putting out, Romanet is putting out to you because we have been doing digital literacy classes and we know what it takes to be able to do this. There are 4,700 veterans in Rome County. And there's also a VA patient, patient population. But this does not include also the spouses and the children and the families who also need to access benefits. So we're not just focused on veterans. We're focused on the families that are attached to this. So I have a proposal here of, this will be a two-year program and it costs $100 per person for us to be able to provide digital literacy training and a refurbished computer for the veterans. So as an outline of this, we want to be able to, we're requesting to get $50,000 for this kind of program because we can be able to train 500 people with this type of program. And it's very easy for us because we've been doing this for the last year and a half. We've conducted over 33 digital literacy classes. So we know what we're doing related to teaching people. The very first thing we always teach people is you need an email. And email is your gateway in order to be able to access all the other information that's online. Does anybody have any questions about this program?
And who you requesting $50,000 from?
From the county. Yeah, because it takes, this would be something that is in collaboration with Derek Sims, who is a county employee. And that's what he listed here. He is a Veterans Benefit Officer. And he suggested that we put this program together and ask the county commissioners to be able to help with this program. I have a milestone schedule of when, how long it would take, all the different steps it would take for us to do it. It's pretty quick because it's a three-hour program. We've been doing this for a while. But it's something that we could start and launch this year and get people going. Do you have some other questions?
Would this be an ongoing grant or by means?
Well, I don't know, but we want to continue doing this program. We believe it will take two years because we have to collect the required specifically, which websites, what do they need to do? We have to walk through the step-by-step program. Each person would get a participant manual show after the class. They can either refer back to it to be able to review it. We're hoping that once we set this up, it should, we should be able to do this ongoing because it's ongoing need. It's not, the need's not going to go away.
As a veteran myself, and I don't know if Commissioner Berry uses any of these sites. As I looked over them, I used several of these sites. And you talk about a difficult task to maneuver, which is federal government, to get through it. And I could, I could see, I could see some training for our veterans in this area because these are very difficult tasks, especially if you, if you don't know that much about computers or whatever I am. You know, I don't, I don't know that we could do $50,000. I think maybe we could do something in the education department in trying to assist you all in educating these.
And that's why the $100 is a good multiplier. So you can multiply it with these $10,000, you could say, okay, we can serve this 100 people. So it's, but we have done this enough to know that it is about $100 to be able to do this for each person.
Appreciate you. Chairman Love, Commissioner Horace.
Is there any state grants? Have you ever looked into state grants or?
Oh, yes, we're applying for other grants, but we have other programs we are also working on. We have senior citizen programs. We have refurbishing computers and the digital lab. So it's not, we're not just focused on this program. This is a program that's an extension of what we already do. But it's going to require a certain focus because the veterans are a special crowd that we want to be sure we do it right.
Chair, Commissioner Goss.
Now, Mr. Horace has, has Derek looked in? I mean, is the VA going to try to support this any or has he went to them or as far as any?
Oh, I don't know about funding, but he, Derek is definitely wants to help us. He will help us with this program for sure.
So it'll be, it'll be going through you all?
It will be going through us for training, but we're utilizing Derek as a subject matter expert because this is coming, he's supporting the people that are coming to his office. And he has, he says every week he gets people that struggle trying to get access to this information.
I'm not a veteran, but I am very supportive of it on the basis. We all were locked down, but you know, and it's budget time for us right now. That's the big amount that I understand the need for.
Right.
Chair recognizes Dr. Hammond.
Ms. Byer, do we have any idea, and this might be a guesstimation, of how many of those 4,700 veterans would you, you would consider digital, that need digital training, literacy help?
Well, Derek gave us a percentage, and it's in this here, that he believes 40% of those 4,700, based on the experience that he has and the people coming to his office. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Henderson.
So what accounting firms money going to be going through? How's it going to be dispersed to you all?
Well, that may decide us and our chairman of donations is the only.
I don't know. She, she's coming in with all the answers. So I'm just, that's really I'm asking the question.
Oh, I don't have the answer for that. I mean, all I have is the proposal from the side of what we could do to train you.
I mean, I, I appreciate you, anything anybody can do better. Don't get me wrong, but I have questions and I'm going to be questionable. I'll ask them, so I just, I have an issue with Romanet handling money. And, and I don't feel comfortable giving Romanet money after the last buckle, so. But I'm, you know, if there was another county firm that maybe handling money, I might be more willing to squander.
Well, we also work with United Way, Rome County. So if that makes you more comfortable doing it that way, we can certainly do that as well. Maybe Mr. Sims has some ideas as well, how the VA would want to handle it. We're open to whatever you requirements would be.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Commissioner Berry.
Yeah, I think from what, from what I've worked this week from the VA, I think, I think the VA is often open to any program that's going to help, that's going to help veterans locally. And I think that's, that's where he needs to go. And I spoke to him a couple of weeks ago because I had trouble with a computer myself there. It brings, we didn't use a computer, but the VA, the VA is, the VA is extremely concerned with, with helping. And this is one of the great things. And I think we could, we could do the veterans. If that's not the case, as the chairman alluded, we certainly, we certainly could run it through the veterans or a number of different ways if we choose, if we choose to.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other questions? I think so. Commissioner Gable.
So population of over 4,700 veterans. And this is probably a question for Derek, but do we know what the average age is?
No, but he said he was going to get the additional data because this is just high-level information. He's going to get more data as the ages, the, how many children are, you know, families, the populations. He can get access to all that information.
And thank you for bringing this to our attention. And I think you're in the right avenue for this. Thank you for hearing enough about the matter.
Okay, if you have any questions, my contact information is in here. Derek is our, our main resource for this. We're just being the hands and feet of what he's asking us to do.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Wilson.
Hey, I just want to kind of, you know, direct you on how you would need to go about this. So you need to make an application for proposal to the nonprofit committee that would be able to assist in this and would be able to discuss when we will disperse funds. So that would be your best avenue. I know you've applied before in that, that is where all that, this would become since your 501(c).
Right. Well, we have an obstacle we have to remove in order for us to be able to get funds.
I'm just saying that would be your avenue of approach.
Yeah, yeah. And this would be the proposal I'm providing to you right now. If there's any other details that are needed, we certainly will do that.
Right. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Bray running, now I know that Commissioner Berry's contract is carved in stone. Was carved in stone when you enlisted?
Thank you.
Well, you're exactly right.
Okay, Vex. Rear guard over three whites. Appreciate you so much. Come on up, sir.
Hello, John Dennis. And still the most wonderful time of the year. Even after the birth of our Savior, Jesus Christ, a lot of other fabulous birthdays are, are being celebrated this time of the year. George Washington, Abraham Lincoln, Martin Luther King. And it's President's Day coming up, I believe. And Andrew Jackson, I don't know when his birthday was, but it was great present. I wish to share something. There was a song that was written by Dick, Dick Holler in 1968. That was a few decades ago. But, and it was sung by Dionne in, in celebration and memory of the wonderful people we've had in the office and, and peaceable protestors and that sort of thing.
This revolutionary new super heater can warm up any room without giant electricity.
Y'all remember this, Martin Luther King, John?
Sure.
Anybody here seen my old friend John? Can you tell me where he's gone? He freed a lot of people, but I see the good that died young.
Thank you. It's gonna be one day soon, it's gotta be in our day.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Anyone else want to address the county commission? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the county attorneys before.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know how I'm going to follow that, but I will try. I like you, Mr. Dennis. I've got three matters. First of all, there are two resolutions that I've placed on your agenda. These involve two properties that are coming up in April at the delinquent tax sale, and they are meth quarantine properties. So I'm assuming that you all don't want to place a bid on those. So passing this resolution will take them out of the tax sale because otherwise, if nobody buys them, the county will get stuck with them. Secondly, we have our zoning and property maintenance cases set for next week. And thirdly, back in March of twenty twenty-two, Rome County joined in a lawsuit with several other counties against Indo Pharmaceutical for expenses relating to dealing with the opioid crisis. In August of twenty twenty-two, Indo Pharmaceutical filed bankruptcy in New York, which ended the lawsuit, but Rome County did file a claim in the bankruptcy. Indo has filed a reorganization plan, and it is up for, up for vote on February twenty-two, and Rome County has a vote. In the fall of last year, the Tennessee Attorney General and the attorney generals from thirty-something other states entered into an agreement with Indo that set aside a pool of money of four-hundred-and-fifty million dollars for Tennessee and these other states where local governments could get reimbursed. And I don't know what Tennessee's share is. But this bankruptcy reorganization plan that is coming up for approval or disapproval on February twenty-two basically says that all Rome County and any other local governments would be entitled to from Indo would be from that plan, that settlement that the state attorney, that the state attorney general participated in. There's money that's set aside for individuals who were, uh, became hooked on opioids, but there's no additional money for local governments. So if you want me to vote for or against it, I need you to let me know tonight. And if you don't want me to vote, then we won't vote. But that, Mr. Chairman, is my report.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, then, Ms. Conley, you fill in for Wade.
Yes, I have a record.
I've got, I've got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Yes, sir. So on these properties, what happens if nobody votes, bids on them? Including us, what happens to the property?
Then they will stay in the name of the delinquent taxpayer. But if nobody bids on them, and it's probably unlikely that anyone will because they are quarantined, then we get in the situation where by default, we wind up owning them, and then we have to clean them up.
Right. And I, and I get that. But if nobody cleans it up, it's just, still gonna be a nuisance to our communities, is that right?
It's quarantine, and it's quarantine through TDEC.
So I mean, it's still quarantine, but it's still right there on public side, the property, is that right?
It's still there, and it's still quarantine, yes.
So people come into our community and see meth quarantined, and nobody's cleaned it up. Man, I'm just questioning, I'm just.
Yeah. So you have to, you have to decide whether you, as a body, want to take on that responsibility.
I think something we might wanna look at, not necessarily now, but maybe another time. Because, you know, as, as the meth and everything else, it gets bigger, bigger, bigger. You know, if we, we start putting off, well, these two properties, now we've got twenty more. You know, and nothing's being done.
Rome County has twenty-four properties that's owned by us.
But, you know, I'm just saying, you know, we, we may wanna start, you know, looking at something. I mean, it's, it's no different than, you know, the codes coming by and say, hey, we need you to clean your front yard up.
Well, I just try to make you aware of all this.
I mean, why am I gonna clean up my yard if we all clean up yours?
But I just, I try to make you aware of all this because of the situation we got in years ago in the city of Harriman, where we wound up with all those dilapidated buildings, and we had to spend a lot of money tearing them down. So I just try to bring these to your attention.
I get that. If we're gonna live in a glass house, then, you know, we, we need to expect people throwing stones. Because you're not gonna come by and tell me I can't do something, or I have to do something on property, when we're not taking care of our own. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Commissioner Bragg. I'm sorry, Commissioner Oates. Let me go both.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sometimes I look over there and answer, oh, what? I think you've already answered my question, Mr. Bragg. I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. Am I correct in assuming that once these properties are quarantined, that they were quarantined, documents attached to the deeds of these properties? Or how would the general public know when they look at this case before they're not yet? A quarantine notice or violation on?
There's a notice of quarantine recorded in the registrar's office, that's how I found it. And then I go to the TDEC website and look at the list of quarantine properties in Rome County and confirm that these are on the list. And I did check today, and they're still on the list.
And anybody, if it came up on the list to be bid on, anybody that would do their research would find the same information that you found. Yes, to the office? Yes, okay. You answered my question.
Commissioner Bragg?
I guess my question on the opioid case that you're talking about, or settlement, so you want us to vote whether or not for you to pursue?
I, I just need to know if you want me to vote on whether to approve, whether Rome County agrees with this reorganization plan or disagrees with it, or if you want me to vote at all. We're just one vote. It has to be approved by two-thirds of all the creditors, so. But this is your opportunity to vote, if you want me to vote.
Probably pros and cons for the county? I mean, what, in, in your opinion?
Uh, we're not getting anything under this plan, other than what the state attorney general has already negotiated. So there's no benefit to us for approval. That's, but, you know, you have a vote and you have a voice, if you want to, if you want me to enter a vote for. That's all I got.
Chairwoman Lewis, Commissioner Horace?
Yeah, I'd just like to endorse what Commissioner Henderson said there on property. And I talked to Mayor Best this afternoon, and he alluded that the city of Harriman has been cleaned up, the second resolution.
Well, it's not showing up as being cleaned up in either the registrar's office or on the state website because the, once you prove to TDEC that it's been cleaned up, then they'll release the quarantines.
That's just what it said. But I, I agree with Junior. If we're gonna hold these folks in the public, you know, liable to keep their places cleaned, I think the county needs to take care of their own problems. And, uh, you, if, I lost my train of thought. But that's basically what I'm getting at. But, well, but we're refusing to tackle because of the issue.
Well, right now, they're owned by private landowners, coming up for sale at the tax sale. So if no one bids on them, if no one buys them at the tax sale, then by default, they've become the property of the county unless you adopt this resolution.
Well, I mean, I think our objective is to get them back on the tax rolls, and there's a liquid taxpayer, and so, you know, either they're gonna sit there and be condemned, and we're not gonna get taxes off of them, or we put them back on the, we, we get them, whatever the cost may be. I don't know what, how much it costs to clean them up. That's just my thought.
A lot, a lot.
A lot.
There's only one team, I think, you guys correctly, Nashville, that's authorized to do chemical, biological, uh, decontamination. And they come in here with a hazmat trailer, and it's, it's very expensive.
It's very expensive.
We can't, 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 we can't.
So, but this is a mild chemical hazard, can't be seen. All right. Anybody else, Commissioner Horace? Commissioner Horace?
Commissioner Henderson, I'm, you know, I understand exactly what you're saying and what Commissioner Horace is saying, but these houses, as you well know, and everybody sees that, you know, they're, it's, it's a, it's a hazardous waste. In the nineties, when we used to deal with them in Harriman, it was nothing, just to do a minor cleanup for half a car or somebody, or company like that, Harbor Freight, somebody like that to come into. And in, in the nineties, I mean, it was ten to twenty thousand dollars just to clean a small residential home. I mean, and according to how long it's been in there, Darryl might be able to lose a little bit on it, you know, but it's, it's according to the extent that, you know, they're gonna have to say it's gonna have to be cleaned. So it's gonna be, you know, is the cost gonna be so much that, you know, that we're gonna actually lose by taking it? I mean, I, I understand something's gotta be done, you know, if there's, I don't know if the state help, federal dollars or something might help with that. It's gonna, I'm just saying, be prepared for, for cost of cleanup.
Chairwoman Lewis, Commissioner Dove?
I, I would ask that we give an estimate on how much it would cost to, to clean it before we say we, well, we deal with this, because I, I agree, I think that it's not on our tax roll, and we want it back on the tax roll, but if, if the cost is so great.
Well, it, it's still on the tax roll.
It's just, we're just not resolving it in the taxes.
Well, they're just not paying.
Sure, sure.
But there's no way to get an estimate because we don't have any right to go in to the property now because we don't own it. And if we wind up acquiring it through the tax sale, then there's a one-year redemption period, and we'll have to let that expire before we can go in and do anything with
All right, Chairwoman Lewis, Commissioner Berry?
Mr. Sir, are these in Harriman?
Um, I know one is.
Yes.
The nine forty-two Sevier Avenue is in Harriman, and I don't know whether five fourteen Green Meadows Road is in the city limits or not.
So, so if they're in the city limits of Harriman, as it stands right now, Harriman City has a liability if someone were to get, go in there and, and mess around in that house and contaminate it. Is that right?
I wouldn't know if they had a liability because they're not the owner of the property. So I, you know, these are, they're private properties, it's just they're going to the tax sale in, in April.
Okay, so if we take them, then we assume that liability, then until we tear them down or do something with it?
Well, you remember the situation eight or nine years ago where we got these contaminated properties in Harriman, and we had to spend tens of thousands of dollars to demolish them? So that's just why I try to bring these to your attention, because that was.
That would be us getting the liability to be on us if we own the property.
Right.
Until we can make sure we get them torn down or, or be cleaned up or something. And I, I'd actually worry for them to be cleaned up. Could ever just tear them down, get it cheaper to clean it up, to tear them down, and it would be good. But if, if, if they're, if they're, if they're city of Harriman, maybe that's why Mayor Best was doing exactly the same thing that Junior's talking about, is getting them cleaned up so that they can control the rest of the code. It's, it's a problem, and it's gonna continue to be a problem, it's gonna get worse, the problem's a dog. We already, already, our back tax is already large, even without that, so it's something we're gonna have to worry about, and maybe, maybe our, has our back tax committee looked at this?
Well, it's, it, it's not. The back tax committee doesn't look at it till after we get it. Yeah. So it's a little premature.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairwoman Lewis, Commissioner Henderson?
Yeah, uh, us as a governing body, we have to keep everything equal. So if we give this to one person, we have to give it to everybody. If we're only gonna take certain properties from people and auction them, we need to take them out. To me, it's, it's, it's no different than if they lost their property because they didn't have the thousand dollars to pay the taxes for ten years. Or if they're losing the property because they ain't paid taxes and it's a meth house. But we're gonna let them retain ownership with the meth house, but we're taking away the ownership of some people's only home they ever had, and we're gonna do it in the name of government. So if we're gonna take from one, we're taking from everybody. If we give it to one, we need to give it to everybody. I understand this is gonna be a lot of money, but that's, that's what the government does. If we can't afford to maintain our own borders, then we need new people here running the government. So we, we don't get, to me, we don't get to pick and choose whose property we're gonna take, or have codes go in there and say, you have to clean up, but you don't. You either do or you don't, hear it from everybody. That's all I have to say.
Commissioner Gable?
Commissioner Lewis, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. I apologize to you that we're dragging this so far down. We don't own these properties. No. We are not responsible for these properties. They will go to an auction.
They will go to an auction. Uh, someone may purchase them, someone may not. This is a year down the road that they have, when they have a time set aside that they can come back and claim their property. We can't do anything to it for one year. Is this something we really need to be addressing at this moment?
I mean, yes, because under state law, when properties come up at the tax sale that have environmental issues, you have the option, under state law, before the tax sale, to decide whether you want to issue a bid on these properties. But we have to let the clerk and master know before the tax sale, and the tax sale is in April.
You say you, are you saying the county?
You as a body, as county commission.
Okay.
So that's why this resolution was filed.
And so if we say, no, we do not wanna place a bid on it, then what happens?
Then it's not gonna get sold at the tax sale more than one.
And these properties are how many years behind in taxes?
We're selling for 2018, so this would be 2018 taxes.
So they're probably not gonna pay the taxes up on these properties?
I don't know.
I mean, probably not. Thank you, sir.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Ling.
I, I would just try to give a little more depth to the conversation. Both these properties, one is point three eight acres, the other is point three seven acres, ten thousand dollar value, forty-five percent assessed of that, so we're not talking large pieces of property. And, and I guess the question is, do we have any authority? If somebody has a meth characterization against their house, can we file judgment like we would if somebody's got a junkyard at their home?
If it's outside the city limits, yes, because it would be, it would probably make the definition of an unsafe structure under your building codes. But if it's inside the city limits, no, because it falls within the jurisdiction of the city of Harriman and their building codes. Or whatever city it's located.
Understood, thank you. Chair recognizes Commissioner Cunningham.
So these are brownfields, considered brownfields?
No, they're not brownfields. They're just quarantined by TDEC because of meth. If someone was probably arrested there making meth at some point.
But it would be, we would look at it kinda like a brownfield in a sense that if you told somebody you have to clean it up, if they couldn't afford to, then what could you do about it? Or what could we do about it? We can't force somebody to clean up something they can't do. You know, the brownfield, if a company closes, if the company goes bankrupt, and they have, because we've had problems in Harriman with the paper mill, and that brownfield, just over time, they, TDEC just let it go. And so we were, we were able to build it again. But if, if the company goes bankrupt, or the family goes bankrupt on the property, would it be who else to take the property and clean it up? Because we can't force them to if they don't have the money.
Well, that's a decision that, that you would have to make. It's just, you know, you have the option of not entering a bid because of the condition that this property is in.
Well, I know if, one, one of the meetings that we had in state, it, it, it just, it's, it's just a rotating problem because no one can afford to clean it up, and no one's going to. It's just gonna sit there. And time, sometimes it solves it. Like I said, that, the paper mill, time just resolves it.
All right, Chair recognizes Commissioner Wilson.
I seen, uh, just to add, I'll make this quick. I, I seen where Commissioner Cunningham was going, because I was going in the same direction as far as the brownfields. And the reason I was asking, this, the brownfields is mainly for industrial purposes, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken. And none of these would fall under that, so if we take ownership of that property, if we end up doing that, none of these can be marketed for any of that, correct? These are residential only.
These are residential properties, and for you to get the quarantine released, you have to clean it up.
So just, and I, I almost considered us going into an executive session for about five minutes to hash this out, because this is something that has to be pretty much done this evening, correct?
Well, I, I would be helpful, yes.
Because I feel like, I feel like in, in the direction we're going right now, that we're going to need, uh, special counsel that's going to help us make this decision, that's going to alleviate some of the questions that's going on before we put a lot of money in, you know, that's gonna cost the county.
Well, I can't take you into executive session because there's no threatened litigation pertaining to this property.
And we don't own the property.
I mean, you don't own the property. It's just, do you as a body want to enter a bid on the property at the tax sale if nobody else bids on it? That's, that's the question.
We get them anyway, right?
Pardon me?
We get them anyway, whether we bid on them or not.
Correct.
Well, here, we, we're gonna get debate.
We've got a resolution coming up on this.
Yeah, and, thank you. If we could just hold off on this debate, we've got two resolutions on this, and we'll require further debating, I'm sure.
Let's do that.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the county executives.
Now seeing that, I don't get opportunity to speak, I'd like to have as much time as he had. Okay, this is from the words from, uh, our county executive. In Governor Lee's state, of the state speech last Monday night, he mentioned two things that are very important to Rome County. First was the addition of eight new state parks across the state, one of which will be the adoption of Fort Sanders, or Fort South. West Point as a state park. This is a huge development for a growing tourism industry in Rome County. The opportunity for Rome County to promote historic tourism in each of our cities is huge. The second thing he mentioned regarded Rome County as challenging Oak Ridge, come the leader and nuclear engineer for the country, in response to Governor's vision and as a result of the joint resolution that the Rome County Commission, Anderson County Commission, and Oak Ridge City Council adopted in December. We're working on a model that would formalize our economic development efforts together, focused on the recruitment of nuclear companies to our area. This is a potential partnership which would include state government representation that has never been possible before, and we are already entertaining prospects. It is a very exciting time. We're in the process of purchasing a new fire truck with the new funds from the CEG grant. Hopefully, we will have something finalized by the next commission meeting. Thank you to all of you who participated in the Tennessee Achieve Seventy by Twenty-Five Announcement at Rome State on January thirty-first. As we recruit new companies, we need our students to be the most prepared for the new jobs coming our way. We will see more promotions in the coming months geared toward our students. We anticipate the mobilization of construction crews from Merritt Construction at the Health Department in the next week. The contract staff wishes a two-hundred-and-forty-day construction period, which puts the completion date in late October. That should give us enough time to move back from the old Michael Dunn Center facility. Construction of the new spay and neuter clinic at the animal shelter continues. The Sheriff's Department trustees, under the direction of Robert Sparks, has done a tremendous job. TCSA County Day on the Hill is next week. I know several of you are planning on attending. There are a number of bills being considered that greatly impact county governments. Please play, pay close attention to updates from TCSA and TCCA regarding efforts that we need to discuss with our legislators next week. That be it.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to special orders. Confirmation of appointment of Crystal Oil to the Rome County Agricultural Extension Committee to fill a seat that was vacant by Alicia Miller, the term will expire December twenty, twenty-sixth. Out of motion. All right, motion by, by Barnes, and second by Hooks, Commissioner Parks.
No, nothing.
Commissioner Hooks.
She can highly recommend you to that committee. She's in the deals of the friends area, and it was discussed at the ad committee overnight, and we are excited to get that position filled.
All right, any debate? Here none, seeing none. All right, before we go on on special orders, Commissioner Berry has something on special orders. Commissioner Berry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I would just like to share with you some, some info on our storm that we had, the twenty-five-year storm that, that pretty much brought Rome County to, to a standstill. And it seems as though there've been a lot, or some folks who, who have a different opinion of what our EMS and our road folks should, should have been doing. You know, the road, the road folks, uh, you know, they were able to clean the main road, but they couldn't get to my house for three days. They're, they're just roads that you can't get to. Uh, and roads that, that, uh, they did go to, and then, and then the ice and stuff came back. EMS, uh, we worked a total of six-hundred-and-forty-nine, three hours. Payroll was sixteen thousand, five-hundred-and-five dollars. The, uh, the EMS folks, uh, we had eleven thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars of overtime. We had seventy-five hours of two part-time people. They were, they were doing everything they possibly could. The, the EMA was, was, uh, you know, two-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars, uh, in, in overtime, and, and in fire. We had three thousand, forty-eight dollars in overtime. Everybody, everybody was doing as much as they could, uh, and with what we had to do with. You gotta remember, we, we're not, uh, you know, we don't have the same snow removal equipment as Green Bay, Wisconsin has. You know, we, we have maybe five, you know, we, we, we're putting salt and stuff out with pickup trucks. So, so I, I, I think the folks that, on the, on the roadside, uh, you know, they started, uh, using brine on Friday and went through Sunday, and, uh, they used brine, uh, until Sunday afternoon, and then switched to salt, to try to get ahead of the, to get ahead of the, of, of the storm. Crews worked around the clock, Sunday, using over seven hundred hours of overtime, total of thirty-five hours. We used approximately four-hundred-and-fifty tons of road salt, thirty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars, compared to the roughly one-hundred to one-hundred-and-fifty tons used in a typical winter. There's two-hundred tons of on order at a cost of twenty-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy dollars, with a total salt cost of fifty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-six. Labor and salt, ninety-one thousand, four-hundred-and-eighteen dollars spent on, on, on that, on that storm. And, and proud to say, we're, we're, we're in budget. We didn't go over our budget yet. If we have another one, then, you know, they're gonna have to look at it. But I, but I just think folks need to understand, uh, we had, we had, we had employees out here, really, in, in some cases, uh, you know, putting their life on the line in, in some of these situations where they had to go, with, with not much equipment to do with. So I, I just say, uh, you know, we owe a debt of gratitude to EMS folks, to, to managers, to Suter, to the road department, Ms. Ferguson, and his, and his crew. Uh, so I, I just, I just wanted to make sure we, we, we have a little capital.
Thank you.
Exactly.
All right, let's move on to our new business. There's no zoning, there's no oil business. Nine resolutions, guys. I know two of them are like a shotgun right now, so. Resolution zero-two, twenty-four, zero-one. Resolution authorizing the clerk and master to not offer a bid on the 2024 delinquent tax sale for certain property imposing an environmental risk. All right, a motion by Henderson, and second by Hook, Commissioner Henderson.
I'll say it again. If we're not gonna bid on this property, we don't need to bid on none of it. You know, we, we make one sale, everybody sells. My, my opinion, thank you.
Commissioner Hooks.
I wanna be brief, Mr. Chairman, because I think this has already been debated, debated. I think a lot of difference in taking class C material to the landfill and the cost thereof, than when you go to talk about cleaning that. See, I know a little bit about, not a whole lot, but I know a little bit about this meth situation. It was coming about when I, I was an officer. It can get expensive. These properties, as pointed out, uh, by Commissioner Lehman, are very small. But they don't go by small. They go by the level of contaminants.
One zero five micrograms per one hundred centimeters, that's continuing.
That can damage.
They'll take the drywall out of the walls, they'll take the ceiling, they'll take the floor, and you'll be left with studs and trusses.
So you, you know, you can't, you can't compare this apples to apples, because it's no comparisons. And anything that would put a burden on our already overburdened taxpayers, I think we need to be cautious about it. Now, I, I'm sure that there's other ways that we can go about, uh, you know, maybe going after these, these property owners, and I hope, uh, you know, if they're, if they're renters, then we need to look at landlords, get their, people who owns the house, uh, living in the house. We need to look, see what, what we can do. But I'm for not, I'm for not taking on this responsibility. I think we're open, opening up a can of worms that we, we can see.
All right, and just to be clear on the statement, Mr. Attorney, we would be a default recipient if no one bid on it. We're not actually bidding on any property that is sold through the county, is that correct?
Sure, not actually bidding on property, but when it goes to sale at the tax sale, if nobody bids on it, then by law, it becomes your property, subject to the right of redemption of property ownership.
Yes, sir. Chair recognizes Commissioner Cunningham.
Okay, so we don't bid, but it becomes ours?
No, by law, anytime property comes up at the tax sale, if no one buys it at the tax sale, then it becomes the property of the taxing entity, which is Rome County. But when you have environmental property, state law gives you, as a body, the choice to not acquire that property at the tax sale.
Okay, so if, if we say, okay, we're not going to acquire that property at the tax sale, then it would come back up for a tax sale in another year?
And then we go through the whole thing?
Okay, so if it came back up for a tax sale in another year, that would give us time to investigate the cost of taking care of the property, what it would take, who we would get to take care of it. We have time as opposed to right now, not having any idea of what it is, or how much it's gonna cost. That would give us time to find out by the next year, because no one's gonna buy it between now and the next year anyway, right?
You're, you're more than likely.
So that's the only reason I would say, if we just don't buy it now, and it's gonna, for the less, be hanging over us, take the time to find out what it would cost, and what would have to be done. And then we could make it, as opposed to just saying, well, we don't know, let's find out. Would that be reasonable?
Yes, I think so.
Would that be reasonable? Because I agree with Mr. Henderson. I, I think just letting something sit there isn't gonna help anything, because it causes problems for everything around it. You know, just like I said with that brownfield mess, it took us a long time for Habitat to be able to build, because we had to wait, 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 and all these environmental assessments, and it took almost two years. And so those do cause problems, properties that are good. So I think we should do something about it, but I don't think we should jump in and say, okay, we're taking it on, and then come to find out it's half a million dollars, and then what do we do? Just my opinion.
Could have been.
Commissioner Goss.
Can this be deferred till next month?
We really need to get an answer tonight. We really need to get an answer off tonight, uh, because we're trying to get everything ready for the sale. And the clerk's office would really appreciate an answer.
Just trying to figure both ways, you know, we need to make an agreement or something.
Yeah. The, uh, the first property, the five-one-four Green Meadow Road, that is not in the city limits. That's the resolution that you have there.
Okay, but the one on the Sevier Drive?
That, that's in the city limits, and another thing you need to be aware of on that one is Harriman is not part of our tax sale this year. So if it goes to sale, nobody buys it, we would be getting it ourselves, it's not joined with the city of Harriman. And there is a structure on that, proof of laws, or is there not? But I would.
There is not.
Uh, I didn't think it had an actual structure on that office for all these times.
I just did a tour, I'm the city councilwoman of Lucian Harris, I just did a tour with Scott Mason today. There is no structure on the Uday Street. There's nothing there, and according to Scott Mason, we do have the cleanup papers now. They may not have filed them correctly, but it supposedly has to be cleaned.
Good.
I know, I know you said it's not there, but I'll make sure Scott contacts you, our attorney. Okay. Okay.
Commissioner Hooks, you still got the floor?
Yeah, certainly, well, I'll just, uh, make my, once again, Charlotte was speaking my mind over there. I think she's reading my mind. But uh, I think what you're saying is correct, and I think that is the best way to handle it. Let's just look at the worst-case scenario, and I say this worst-case scenario, according to average, I was sitting here looking up. If there is no structures on the property, this is a good thing and we're vying on cleanup paperwork. What we're all trying to avoid is everything coming back on us, but if it's worse, on average, is fifteen to twenty thousand is what it's showing for meth cleanup, surely to goodness we can sell the property after it's cleaned up with due paperwork, after it's been, uh, everything's been, uh, the remedification's been done. So, uh, I agree with you on that. I think that was a wise statement to, to go in for a correction that we need to go, so I agree.
And just carries up that, what did we get, fifteen thousand dollars for clean?
Just looking up on average for the basic cleanup on, for, for meth property, that they come in and do is, uh, I'm sure it's taking out, not putting it back, that's why it's that way. But if there is no structure on the property, well, then you're better off. You just need the paperwork to match up to the, to the lane of the property, correct? And if we don't bid on this property and we get it by default, then...
Well, I would say that once you turn around, once the county turns around and tries to sell this property, if there's still a notice of quarantine in the registered deeds office that has not been released, then you're probably limiting your ability to sell it.
Oh, we are, one hundred percent, but hopefully we can, in due time, get that done. There's nothing we can do right now anyway, so. Got it.
All right, Chair recognizes Commissioner Bracken.
I guess my question, let's just make this easy. Explain the yes vote, explain the no vote, and surely we can move on from this topic that we've been on. So if, if we vote yes, it does not go out for sale. We don't have any way, it, it don't come back on the county, correct?
Correct.
Uh, if we vote no, there's a chance it comes back on the county, it costs the county money.
If, if you vote no on this resolution, then it will not bid, and if nobody bids on it, if nobody bids the delinquent taxes that are owed, then Rome County will become the home.
Yes, next question. In voting, I want to vote the right way, but in voting, is there a structure? Is there not a structure? If, if there's not a structure, then this bare land is able to, to sell, is it able to move on or not, unless it's through the registered deeds? It's not clear until it goes through the, the office, correct?
The only way I know to answer your question, I have not personally seen these properties. Uh, on this, on the property that's in the city of Harriman, which is the next resolution, the tax card has zero dollars for improvement value. I don't know if that means that there's no structure, or if that means there's a structure, but there's no value to it. I don't know. But there is a notice of quarantine on registered, the register's office. And until you go through whatever you have to go through to get that released, then you're not gonna be able to transfer marketable clear time.
So a yes vote protects the county per se. A no vote opens us up.
All right, Chair recognizes Commissioner Doug.
Uh, property tax sales occur every six months, is that correct?
Not once a year.
Once a year, okay. So it will be one year before we would be able to do?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other, any more debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Yeah, he's having, uh... Number three. All right, thank you all. Moving on to the, the next resolution, oh-two, twenty-four, oh-two, in similar manner. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, and second by Commissioner Hooks, Commissioner Henderson.
Say it again, if the county is gonna make one person's sale, we need to make them all. We cannot pick and choose who will, whose driveway we pave and whose driveway we don't.
Commissioner Hooks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I repeat, uh, what I've already said. If it doesn't have a structure, it still has the liability. The lane is still, uh, against the property, and until the property, uh, till that is removed, the value to the county, in my opinion, will probably be very little or if any, and I can conclude.
All right, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Thirteen-two. Next up, uh, resolution, resolution, uh, oh-two, twenty-four, oh-three, a resolution in support of the fourth, uh, of the four, repeal of the Tennessee certification needs law. They have a motion. They have a second. Commissioner Barks. Commissioner Berry.
Yeah, I think, I think basically this, uh, certificate of need applied mostly to medical facilities, and, uh, they're saying that because of the certificate of need, there's been, there's been lots of hospitals that have closed across the, closed across the state of Tennessee, and, uh, they're trying to get away with the, the, uh, we've supported the full repeal of Tennessee's certificate of need laws, and, uh, asking, uh, Senator Yeager and Mr. Brits and Butler to, to enact such a policy to, to make it easier for, uh, for medical facilities to come in. Is that, so what do you read there? That's what I got out of it.
Uh, yeah, my only experience is I know when, uh, in order to set up a hospital somewhere, the state has to issue a certificate of needs, and this resolution is asking that the certificate of needs law be repealed.
So, so like, if you wanted to add on to the hospital, if you wanted to, if you wanted to make any adjustments, you gotta have a certificate of need showing, you know, all the criteria that the state was willing to be putting in there. So this is just saying that we probably could retain the number of hospitals in the state had we, uh, had we not had this.
All right, thanks, sir. Any debate? Hearing none, seeing none. Most carries, you know, resolution zero-two, twenty-four, zero-four, a resolution to amend and update the bylaws of the Environmental Review Board. Motion by Doug, second by Commissioner Henderson, Commissioner Doug.
Uh, yes, this, uh, update will allow the members, Mr. Gann and I, to have the voting members of that committee. Currently, there is no vote, and this will help inform. It will also give a vote to either County Executive Presswell or Tim Suter, whoever is there at the meeting. Uh, so this is just adding voting members to, to the Environmental Review Board.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, so, Commissioner Hammond.
Uh, just a question, Commissioner Doug. Uh, could you kind of provide for me just the purpose of why we would have someone, a county commissioner that's kind of reoccurring, it's renewal until the end of their term? Uh, it would be on page two of, uh, the bylaws we have, this section two? Just to help me kind of understand the purpose of why we would have commissioners, commissioners that their, uh, appointment would be continual and not, uh, just continue to reoccur?
Uh, I think, I, I, Mr. Gann, do you, do you know what? I think Wade had, uh, is the one that, uh, assisted in doing those, uh, but there, there... What was the question? Yeah, I apologize.
Uh, that, well, the states that the county executive may appoint to current, current county commissioners who are voting members, the appointment of the county commissioners is automatically renewed until that member is no longer on the commission or officially resides the board. So is there a reason why we're, it's continual and that we don't put new people on it? I'm sure the public is, or?
I think it was a decision that was made by the Environmental Board early on, because it's such a challenge to get people on that board, so I think they tried to maintain it.
Thank you so much, thank you so much.
All right, let me correct them. Commissioner Henderson, you had your second, I finished.
No, the first, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Barks.
So, um, Wade's not here, it'd probably be a question for him. Why is, this has always been by the, nominated by the Committee on Committees, why is it now being appointed by the county executive?
And I, guys, let me answer that, and you, you help me out if you want. Think different. Some positions are appointed by the county executive, certain boards. He holds the right to appoint those. I don't know, under Tennessee code annotated, if this is one of those boards?
It's not. The, the, this is a board that was created by county commissioners, so those, uh, requirements were created by county commissioners.
Okay.
So, so I appreciate us getting a vote on the Environmental Board. I think we should add votes, but I think the commission should dictate who's on those and not the county executive.
The Committee on Committees.
The Committee on Committees from the commission. The county executive appoints the rest of the board, and he's a voting member. I don't, I think the commission should retain who we put on there.
So pass forward, right, we need to table this, or, or we can amend it?
I think, I think, Mr. Chairman, the way, the way I read this is, is those two members were appointed to this board by Committee on Committees. And I think, and I think what this means is, is that they would, they would retain on here until that Committee on Committees appoints new members, or until their term is up.
Got you. It says the county executive may appoint up to three current county commissioners who will be voting members of the ERB, section two, page two. It's pretty, pretty black and white, says the county executive will.
Well, I think the county executive appoints the other members of the board, and, 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 and the county commission will consider recommendations. Uh, and that's, that's just my, that's just my judgment, is that he would, he appoints all the members, with the exception of our, of our two now.
So, Mr. Gann, you're the chairman of the Committee on Committees. Did you make an appointment last time we filled it?
Yes, we did, we, we did.
And we were doing it with Mr. Doug.
But if we approve these, these bylaws, we will not.
Correct.
The bylaws, the new bylaws are stating that they'll be filled by the county executive.
Correct.
Currently, those positions are selected by the Committee on Committees, so I think we need to table it, to go back and look at the bylaws.
Table or amend?
Just amend it. Yeah.
I'm, I'm good.
Well, I, I'd like to give the county executive courtesy of justifying or speaking to it, so he has access here. Uh, Doug.
It's, it's not a dire, it's not a direly.
Now, I hear a motion to table this regulation.
Motion.
Second. Can I do a voice vote?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I see others wanting to speak to it, is there any more speaking required for this resolution? All right, Mr. Berry, would you do a high one?
I'm, I'm good, thanks, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to, uh, resolution, uh, oh-two, two-four, oh-five, a resolution to uphold the Governor's Leaks Education Freedom Act.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
Would you consider that, you're deferring it?
Yes, deferring it to, to next month. The county executive will be president. Free, man? All right, motion and second, I mean. I can't see, is that a motion and second for the continuing?
Wilson, Hooks, look. Yes.
All right, I see. Mr. Wilson.
Uh, yeah, this is, uh, something that I, I feel like we should, uh, be in support of for Senator Yeager taking to the session with, uh, anything that takes money out of our pocket. If, if we pass, if the governor passes this and, uh, the voucher system takes place and the budget never changes, that money has to come from somewhere. And, and by law, the budget has to stay the same. If this gets passed and they start sucking out over seven thousand dollars every time, you, you'll get thank you letters from citizens around Rome County for having to spread that wealth amongst them. So be thinking about that. That's why I'm totally, totally opposed against the voucher system.
Commissioner Hooks, you had your second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm also opposed to the voucher system. We have some good, uh, Christian schools, we have some good home schools, uh, I'm not taking away from any of that. I think that it tilts the scale if, uh, if we allow this to happen, to where that, uh, they'll take the vouchers, they'll take the premium to crop, and we will be left, uh, to, uh, to fund, uh, those, uh, maybe that are not able to go into the private school. I know that's a lot of money, but, uh, I just, it, it just takes the control, and our public school system has worked for all these years. Uh, you know, we've had our good times, we've had our bad times, but we in Rome County have one best school system, we have one of the best education systems, uh, in Tennessee. Uh, I thought there's a lot of things we need, but we don't need this.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Hooks. Mr. Berry.
Yeah, this, this is, uh, this is a resolution I, I brought up, bringing it last, last month in, uh, in our office forum. This is about, this is the resolution that basically the school system, uh, passed, so we're piggybacking that one, number one. Number two, we're losing seven thousand, thirty-two dollars, um, for every, for every student that, uh, that decides to, to, to use some other source of education, whether it be home school, private school, or whatever. Uh, and we would have to maintain, so as we lose those dollars, we're still having a maintenance of effort that we have to maintain. Uh, we're losing right now in, in the preserve, kids going to the city of Oak Ridge. But that's, that's, that's our, that's our tax dollar going in. Uh, the governor says it's not taken away from, uh, from, from public education, but there's a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars that, that's going to the voucher system, so that would be, that would be money that, that could be going to public education. Then I think the last thing is, is Senator Yeager... Then I think the last thing is, is Senator Yeager and, and then the Brits are opposing this. So I think, I think to support them, we should be, we should be in unanimous support of this resolution as well, since they're sticking their necks out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Henderson.
All right. So I said earlier tonight, I won't be the one with all the questions. And, you know, you look at this deal and we should all look at it closely, that yes, it's going to hurt our public schools if this actually happens. But then again, you look back and, you know, do we hire the fops to guard the hen house? So what we're doing, we're, we're sending money to the people that's not protecting our children. We're giving it to a school board and system, a school system that has done nothing, has passed policy to protect our children. They've actually done the opposite. They elected nine to one to keep the policies the same. And by doing so, they're allowing child pornography, child prostitution, child rape, child, child murder, child everything to be brought into our school system. And they've been over 600 documents filled out that they asked for, and not one response back yet. And so we're giving money to the fops. And they're, they're, they're using this money to bring in all this child pornography and other stuff in the schools. And I think we need to start looking closely and start asking questions before we come in here and just say, yes, thank you. Okay? I would rather have questions I can't answer than answers I'm not allowed to question. And every time I've asked a question, I've yet to get an answer, I get danced around the total public eye. Okay? I don't think voucher system's the way to go. But we need to start looking at who we're giving the money to. Because ever since I've been on this commission, I've been nothing to lie to about where the money's going, where it's going to be spent. And I was in there the night they voted nine to one to not change any policies. I'm mad because I feel like I'm the only one mad. There should be 14 other people on this commission standing up there, jumping up and down, don't know why. And there's not. I have trouble giving money to an organization that is not protecting our children. Do I think it would be better off with children somewhere else? Guaranteeing I do. Why, why do we want to keep sending money to an organization that's got these special libraries and different things, and they're, they're showing these books to these children? On how to have sex with another child in our elementary school?
Commissioner Henderson.
Talk about.
Commissioner Henderson. Mr. Let, let me, let me, we're deviating from the original resolution.
This is a vote. The resolution is about giving money, and I'm still on.
Governor Lee's.
Appreciate it. So the point is, they're using the taxpayer's money for this stuff. This is taxpayer money we're talking about. I haven't got it, but I appreciate it, sir. So, you know, we need to start looking closely at how our tax dollars are spent that we're giving these people. Because when I asked them if they could account for the dollars they spent on this trash, they said no. If they can't account for the taxpayer's money, why are we continuing to give it to them? If a private school could do better, let's give them the money. But I am not going to support it. Keep spending money, sending money down a rabbit hole when they're doing nothing to protect our children. And it's on record. If you don't believe what I'm saying, they voted not to change any policy to protect the children from child pornography. That's all I have to say.
I have something I want to say before I speak to the resolution.
Thank you.
The library materials that we heard, it's at least the third time, the Rome County School Board, the policy on the library books. I, it is the strongest policy of any school system policy on library books. The books are removed when they are under review. They are no longer on the shelf. There is no county that surrounds us, and none that I have found, that actually remove the books from the shelf when they're under review. They keep them in place while they're being reviewed. So when they're under review, they're not there. No one, no other school system does. Our school board felt that they needed to be removed while they were under review. That is the right decision. I agree with that decision. That puts, that's the strongest policy in the state.
I'm with you on that.
That is the strongest.
I'm with you on that.
Now, to this resolution, I'm a product of public education, and I believe most of you are. Public schools are underfunded as it is. Tennessee is in the bottom ten of states for funding and vouchers. We'll divert state funding away from public schools. The governor's plan would give $7,075 in state funding for students to attend private schools. That's about 1,300 less than what the schools receive to, for that same student. Also, private schools are not held to the same standard of testing, curriculum, teacher qualifications. Private schools do not have to take students with disabilities, and most do not. I would love to see this governing body stand with Senator Yeager and our public schools by supporting this resolution.
Thank you, sir. Chair recognizes Commissioner Hooks.
Mr. Chairman, I must make one quick comment. I was actually invited to go aboard Education. Everything that I seen and I reviewed, it showed, I don't think we was heading up and looked at books. Man, I seen books there when I was going to school in Emory Heights. So, I mean, they've been around. I said it in, in a meeting a month or so ago, and I'll stand with it again tonight. We can't sit here and blame, you know, our governing body, we can't blame all of school system. But until, until the families get got back in the homes, nothing is ever going to change. Thank you, sir.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Hooks.
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman. As you all know, my feelings and my stance on inappropriate material in our school system, any work to that matter. Now, if it's in the home and the parents want it in the home, that's another thing. But I was invited to the school system, and I strongly encourage everybody to pick up the phone and get invited, since we're deviated, and I apologize, Mr. Chairman, but I think this needs to be said. I sat there, and they took an old country boy's stance, and they went page, a page, spreadsheet, a spreadsheet, what was under review, what had been removed, policies that had been altered. For example, the librarian was the responsible party for ordering the books with, and not being reviewed. Now, it's the librarian being the responsible party with the principal as, as the person to review it. And what I saw, is it, is it perfect? No, we got some work to do. But I think that we've got people that have taken notice to this. And it might be by our comments, but they've taken notice to it, and they, they want to help it. Now, it's real easy to sit on the outside looking in, as Commissioner Henderson alluded to earlier in another resolution. It's easy to sit on the outside looking in and pass judgment. But if we aren't not on the inside, looking at the material, how it's handled, how it's brought in, another thing that impressed me, you know, we got these book companies that you order from them, they'll just give you a bundle of books at no cost, just to get them in the school system. Well, we've decided we didn't want to do that. If we didn't order it, we're not one, we're not one except. So, you know, I'm a lot more comfortable, Mr. Chairman, and I'm going to conclude with this. I'm a lot more comfortable tonight than I was last month. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We're going to call the vote on Resolution opposing Governor Lee's Education Freedom Act. I know we got off subject there, but that's what this vote is on. Fourteen yes, one no, resolution passes. Resolution oh-two twenty-four oh-six. A resolution allowing the County Executive to approve payment of $125,775 from the city of Oak Ridge portion of the ARP A Fund we use without having to tie to T. D. A. Motion by Commissioner Berry, second by Commissioner Doug. Commissioner Berry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This, this came before the, before the Budget Committee. And what's happened is we had allocated $125,775 to the city of Oak Ridge when we were all, when we were, when we had given money up to all of the cities. And, and our intention that they hadn't used their money. And, and so now they're asking, you know, if this, this would, this would give them the money that, that they hadn't used.
Which unties.
Right, which unties, yes.
Which, yeah.
So, so it's not new money. It's just, it's the same money that was given, and, and I think one, one thing was they had changed city managers, and I think this money was still on the books. And so they requested that, that this money be allocated, and, and the County Executive Presswell was, was, was aboard, and they passed it up. Thank you.
Commissioner Doug.
Nothing further.
Any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Fifteen oh, pass. Resolution oh-two-two-four oh-seven. A resolution amending the operating of the Solid Waste Fund, Sanitation Fund for 116 for fiscal year 2024. Motion by. Motion by Hooks. Second by Gann. Commissioner Hooks.
I'm healed to miss time and express my knowledge.
This is just balls of peace. When we started the budget, we assumed that our costs were going to be down, but we still had more trash and more pickups. So the cost is just, we're increasing it $125,000.
All right. Commissioner Gann.
No, sir.
Any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right. Resolution passed, fifteen oh. Oh-two twenty-four oh-eight. A resolution amending the operating of the General Capital Project Fund, $171 AMV for fiscal year 2024. Motion by Berry, and second by Hooks. Commissioner Berry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This, this came to the, to the Budget Committee, and it was just a matter of a quote for new ambulance was $1,481 over what, what we had, what we anticipated. So this is just cleaning that up. Thank you.
Commissioner Hooks.
Nothing further.
Any debate? Hearing none, seeing none. Fifteen oh, resolution passed. Oh-two twenty-four oh-nine. A resolution amending the operations of the District Attorney General Fund, $364 for the fiscal year end of 2024. Motion by. Motion by Berry, second by Gann. Commissioner Berry.
Yes, sir. This, second by Gann, it was coming to the Budget Committee, and we were just amending the budget for the district attorney.
All right. Commissioner Gann.
Got a vote, sir.
Any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Resolution passed, fifteen oh. All right. Hey, before we adjourn, guys, it's, I see our job is trying to keep this on front. A lot of times we deviate because we tie motions into certain resolutions. But please allow me to guide you. If we deviate, I'm, I'm going to try to build us back in and get us back on business. And several times, if you review this and watch this tonight or tomorrow or something, you'll see opportunities for, for we could be better, opportunities for officials. So just bear with me as I try to improve that process. So thank you all. It's any other business to come forward with Rome County Commission.
Good work, sir.
Seeing none. Motion to adjourn by Hooks, second by Wilson.